We're going to call the meeting to order. Welcome to the City Planning Commission Subcommittee on Comprehensive Plan. This is video and audio accessible, and to listen and speak at public comment, please call two zero six three three seven.
No call. Uh, people are, uh, this isn't being broadcast on C T N, so if people are already either on by phone or by Zoom, they can either use the star nine to raise their hand or just use the raise hand feature.
Perfect. Thank you, Brett. Appreciate your clarification. Um, with that, um, we're actually going to be, um, today, we're going to go over public comment, and then we're going to have a presentation about the future land use. And so with that, let's move on to public comment. Persons may speak for three minutes about an items, and please state your name and address for the record. Do we have anybody who would like to speak at this time?
We've got a lot of people called logged in, so let's just give it a minute to see if anybody indicates they would like to address the committee. Anybody's interested in addressing the committee for up to three minutes, please use the raise hand feature. Um, and let's get started here. Kirk Westfall, you can unmute yourself, and you have three minutes to address the committee.
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me?
Sure can.
Oh, great. Uh, it's Kirk Westfall, thirty five oh five Charter Place. Um, thanks for, thanks for, uh, looking closer at, uh, at these maps and the consultant's information. Um, uh, just personally, it's, it's, it's been great seeing how much, um, energy there's been in the public meetings and enthusiasm for fixing the housing crisis. And I think the consultant team has done a good job reaching constituencies and organizations who don't normally participate. Um, I guess what I can't figure out is where the, what seems to be a constant drumbeat of ideas is coming from to make dense housing more difficult. Uh, specifically, the, the most troubling ideas for me include the employment zone, which explicitly prohibits all housing and the innovation zone, which requires, uh, allow a large amount of office in every project, which, as we know, may not pencil for decades, um, and therefore, uh, would i- in effect prohibit housing. Um, so taking these massive areas, um, all served by transit off the market for housing seems to, seems to contradict the council mandate for densifying. Um, the other troubling thing is it seems to be desired to discard the T C one district, uh, and replace it with, um, this mixed-use hub and it's, uh, it's three flavors. Um, I, I, I think T C one's a far superior to hub. Um, it's a lot more sensitive to nearby low-scale buildings, uh, going down to fifty-five feet, uh, near low-rise instead of eighty feet for hubs. So to me, it eliminates the need for a whole new transition district to line it with. It even could, uh, eliminate the need for D two if, uh, you know, D one and D two were all converted to T C one. Um, so because T C one is self-tapering, I guess I'd, I, I'd challenge you to come up with reasons why T C one shouldn't simply be used for every commercially zone parcel, including downtown, all C districts, and, uh, many areas of R four C. Um, and because T C one goes down to fifty-five feet, uh, it's very close to the forty-eight feet that the planning commission has been contemplating to see possible in low-rise zones as it is. So that's seems to be very close. Um, the other possibility I'd like to quickly hi- highlight building off of planning commission's desire to upzone our districts, um, is the possibility of a tapering mechanism within the low-rise residential district. I think Auckland does this, um, where you can combine parcels and build higher toward the, you know, the middle of combined parcels, but when you approach a neighbor's property line, you have to taper it down. So I think doing this could, uh, you know, affect streets like Miller, or maybe the residential parts of Stadium, where you have perhaps some deep lots and you could build taller up against the street, and you wouldn't even need the, the mixed-use transition district for those corridors. So I think in effect, we only really need two zones for building if they're self-adjusting. Thanks.
You. Brett Pritz, you can unmute yourself and address the committee for up to three minutes.
I'll keep this very short. I've sent a written communication.
Hear you very well. I don't know if you are, um, can you get closer to a microphone?
Oh, just a moment, sorry. How's that now?
That's better. Thank you.
Okay, sorry. Um, I sent a written communication, so I'll keep this very brief. But let me just ask, whatever your plans are, and these plans need to consider not just, I think they're much beyond the planning commission, but also other city units such as the Housing Commission and Council. Keep them simple. Uh, we, we have the, maybe the, the best example, the Ann Arbor Y lot, which is pushing twenty years with still no housing for people who need it, and because we've tried to get something for nothing. I'm willing to step up and pay my taxes to help our most vulnerable residents. And I think most Ann Arbor residents would agree with me. So let's not overcomplicate it. Let's keep it simple. Thank you.
Thank you.
You have three minutes to address the committee.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Just barely. Also, if you can get closer to a microphone, it might help.
About now. Is that better?
Yes, thank you.
Great, thanks. Uh, I'm excited because I think with a few changes, this plan could be great. And I think the most important change is to eliminate the employment district that forbids housing. City Council asked for a plan that allows more housing with flexible, adaptable zones, and it also said to avoid use limitations wherever possible. And I think, uh, these requirements can be better met if the employment district that bans housing with use restrictions is eliminated. And I know some have argued both now and during the T C one project that if you allow housing on South Industrial, for example, developers will build so much new housing that all the existing businesses will be driven out to the townships, and residents will need to drive farther to fix their cars or buy plumbing supplies. But consider what has happened in our districts that have allowed both housing and commercial uses. Has housing driven out all the businesses on Stadium, Plymouth, and Washtenaw, where housing has been allowed in C three districts for decades? No, there's still auto body shops, car washes, and appliance stores in those corridors. And there's actually been very little housing built there, and the change has been very gradual to allow more housing in that area. So I think any change on South Industrial would likely also be gradual. Another potential argument is that the city should reserve some area for messy industrial uses that would disturb residential neighbors. The problem with this argument is that South Industrial already has thousands of residential neighbors. South Industrial is a narrow strip running right along a neighborhood, and there are multiple schools and stores in the strip itself. The city's even building an affordable housing project in the strip. To say that loud, messy, or dangerous uses should go next to the city's affordable housing, or the Arabic Language Charter School would be unjust and unwise. A third concern is that allowing housing to outcompete businesses on South Industrial would somehow take away jobs from skilled tradespeople. But new housing construction especially benefits tradespeople. For tradespeople, housing is a job site, both at the time of construction and whenever maintenance is needed. Housing requires plumbers, electricians, carpenters, drywallers, painters, locksmiths, and many other skilled trades. If South Industrial evolved into a dense mixed-use area, it'd probably employ far more blue-collar workers than the handful of storage lockers, dog daycares, and wholesale stores that are there today. So please drop the employment district and the other districts that restrict residential uses, and you'll have a greatly improved plan that meets city council's requirements. Thank you, and happy Thanksgiving.
Uh, no other speakers are indicating, uh, desire to address the committee?
Okay, all right.
Karen Lee. Yeah, I was just gonna suggest that you let everybody know this is their only time for public comment. So if they do want to speak, they must speak now.
Yeah, yeah, a hundred percent. You know me, I always give that three seconds. So, um, it looks like we actually have a call in.
Yeah, call with the phone number ending with six one seven. You can press star six to unmute your phone and address the committee for three minutes.
Hello, it's Jonathan Levine calling from four five six Hildale. I'd like to speak from what we've learned from other cities about what works in terms of significant housing expansion. As fond as I am of upzoning, uh, resident, uh, uh, single-family neighborhoods, it hasn't produced a huge amount of housing, uh, elsewhere. What has produced a large amount of housing is significant upzoning to actual higher densities on the major corridors. For that reason, I'm quite concerned about what I see as needless complexities creeping into the plan. Because we've taken some of our potentially most housing productive areas and either excluded housing, and that would be our employment zones on, uh, South Industrial and North Main, or we've taken, parrot, oddly, we've taken our recently rezoned T C one areas, which are very favorable to housing, and slapped on new and needless housing restrictions, uh, in the form of, uh, of guidelines for our, uh, uh, innovate, the innovation zone or the retail zone. I think what we need to do is stick with the T C one principles, and that is housing is strongly encouraged in all of these areas, uh, without, uh, without constraint and without trying to force, uh, uh, a ground, uh, ground floor retail or a certain percentage of, uh, innovation employment, which is likely to thwart the kind of development that we're going to look for. Ultimately, what we need to serve our housing crisis and our carbon neutrality goals. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, we'll give it, uh, a few more seconds. Again, this is the only chance to speak, uh, on public comment on this particular matter. Okay, um, seeing none, I think we can close public comment at this time. And then we will be moving on. Um, we had the various communications of the planning commission under two, two eight, and then we are moving on to presentations from I'll read summary and the future land use from our contractors. I see Stacy and, uh, Mr. Kevin here. So we could, we can move on to promoting them, as well as Mr. Granger. So.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Lee and, uh, committee. Uh, I think I have the consultant team all invited into the meeting at this point. Uh, so, um, thank you. We're gonna share, um, a version of the similar PowerPoint that we shared with our steering committee, uh, last week. Um, I do want to highlight that there are a couple of discussion items that you're gonna see in this that I anticipate. They generated quite a bit of discussion at the, uh, steering committee, and, um, I anticipate they will here as well. My ask to you is that even though, uh, uh, as Jamie's running through the presentation, and you're gonna see some sort of topical discussions based on some of those slides, um, my suggestion is that we get through the PowerPoint, you jot down any questions that you have, and then we'll come back to those discussions just to make sure at least we cover all of the content that we want. And then we can sort of prioritize those discussion topics that you are most interested in spending some of your time on. Um, obviously, you heard some feedback about some of the refinement to some of the, uh, proposed future land use maps that we are proposing. Um, we had some discussion, um, about differentiation to the low-rise residential district and some of the transition zones. Um, so those are just, uh, some opportunities for more in-depth discussion. Um, one thing I do also want to just highlight is that, I wanna, I, I do want to name that this is a future land use map. And so when we're talking about these land use categories, um, that is distinct from zoning, and it's easy, uh, for me to get pulled into details of how a zoning district might be, um, utilized to implement this. And rightfully so, because the more specific the comprehensive plan is in that the more clear direction we as the planning commission and the city have to follow up on those things. But, um, the future land use map is not zoning districts, and so, um, that there is no magical formula about how specific or general the future land use map should be, um, to either facilitate or guide the direction of zoning changes that we make. So that's just, uh, another piece that I want to sort of plant with you as we go through our conversation tonight. Um, with that, I probably now need to give Jamie some superpower to be able to share his screen. And then we will be off to our presentation and discussion.
It looks like, looks like I can share. Can everyone see this? Okay, great. Let me just go big screen for you. Okay, um, so thanks, Brett. Um, good evening, everyone. Thanks for making the time for us. I always appreciate these conversations. Very useful for our process. Um, so quickly go through the agenda. Um, since we saw you last, we've had some opportunities to engage with the public, so we just wanted to share some of the feedback we've learned um, from those events. And then, as everyone kind of alluded to, spend most of the time talking about the future land use, uh, classifications and, and the map as well. Um, so since we last met, we had, uh, workshop in October. If you were able to come, uh, thanks for coming. Um, it, it took a similar format to our events in March. Um, it was at the Downtown Public Library. It was done in coordination with the, um, downtown circulation study. Um, it was really an opportunity for us to share some of, uh, our initial ideas around goals and strategies, but also introduce the future land use, um, districts and also the map and get some feedback. So we had some, uh, about two hundred people, some really good conversations. Um, we had a few opportunities and activities for engagement. So this was a particular, this is a, a, a photo of one of the boards that we had at the event, where it was tied to the future land use map and called out some of the bigger picture, uh, moves that we're taking from a land use perspective. And really just wanted to get a, you know, a, a check on how people are feeling. Do they agree or disagree? Um, you can see majority of the stickers are really on that agree side. Um, so we had some very strong agreement in development along transit corridors, um, adding density near, near North Campus and redevelopment of shopping centers, um, some strong agreement on, uh, adding some flexibility to the low-rise residential districts and expanding downtown. And then some moderate agreement on preserving some industrial space. Um, and we can talk about that more later. Um, and another, uh, activity we had was around, um, was asking people to really prioritize things. Um, so we had kind of a hypothetical development site, and asked, uh, people what they thought would be the most important thing to consider as, as something redeveloped. So we had nine different options. Um, you'll see that people prioritize affordable housing and increase in the over supply, overall supply of housing the most. Um, kind of the first two responses, um, you'll notice preservation of natural features and green building practices were also, uh, a priority. But to a much lesser extent than some of the housing goals, uh, it's interesting to think about that when we're thinking about trade-offs um, in, in the broader plan. And then thinking about, um, design of buildings and stormwater management, increasing accessibility in homes kind of scored lower as priorities. We also had some opportunities for some focus groups around, uh, we organized them around some of the major topics, um, and more or less to some of the values. Um, so we had a focus group around housing. Um, so the listed out are just some of the kind of major, uh, topics of conversation and takeaways from those conversations. Um, so in housing, people were very supportive of residential density. Um, I think there was, uh, a strong, uh, realization that, you know, housing and transportation really need to be planned in unison. So that was, you know, important thing to consider in our future land use plan. Um, the idea around using public land for affordable housing, um, you know, the city's already doing that with some of the redevelopment of, of some of the parking lots downtown. So are there more opportunities to do that? And then aging in place, uh, and really acknowledgement that zoning and land use in this plan isn't going to solve the affordability crisis on its own. Um, for sustainability, uh, there's again, strong support for density. You'll, you'll notice that that kind of shows up in a lot of things, and that all of these things are kind of interconnected. Um, expansion of bike and trail network, uh, so thinking about moving away from, uh, and providing more opportunity for transit options in the city. Some conversation around community resilience and building energy, um, but also acknowledging that there's some broader city goals of being carbon neutral. So, you know, that needs to be emphasized in this plan. Um, but also recognizing that trade-offs will not leave everyone happy, which I think we all understand. Um, from equity and access, um, again, affordable housing comes up, um, but affordable commercial space, uh, came up as well. So thinking about, more affordable, cheaper types of commercial spaces and diversity of type of commercial spaces was important. Diversity of type of jobs, um, keeping skilled trades in Ann Arbor. Um, and then some more conversations about, uh, homeownership and, uh, uh, buildings with the, that are suitable for people with disabilities. And then finally, for the natural features conversation, um, I think there's a strong recognition that natural features, biodiversity ecosystem is all really important to Ann Arbor. Um, uh, none, and not all of that should be kind of thrown out the door when we're thinking about these, uh, affordable housing opportunities. So, um, we, we talked about, uh, the idea, um, around, or more specifically around site plan review and how we could get better outcomes of that process. And then at a higher level, thinking about, you know, what is preservation for? What is the overall goal? Is it for ecological impact, or is it for equality of life? Um, so those are some of the bigger takeaways. All of this, we're kind of gathering into a broader database of our ongoing conversations with the public that is really kind of informing our recommendations and some of the decisions, uh, that we're making on the land use plan as well. So I want to transition to the future land use. Um, so last time we spoke with you, we had some general ideas around, um, some simplified districts. Uh, we showed how some of those districts could be applied directly to your, some of your existing categories, what that would look like on a map, and then had a broader conversation around, you know, where do some of these districts strategically make sense? Um, so we've spent, uh, the time since really refining the districts and applying them to the map. So hopefully, talking about that with you all tonight. I, I pulled this, uh, we had a slide in here. I think Brett, uh, already spoke to it, so don't really need to, to spend too much time. But again, the distinction between future land use and zoning, future land use is really visionary. Um, zoning is the regulatory framework, you know, our charge in this process is kind of these vision, you know, what are the ideal, um, state of how the land used, is used. Obviously, zoning plays an important role of that, but we're not going to be rewriting the zoning code as part of this process. Um, so again, fully, you know, we've been gathering all of these major topics that have come up through the process, and we started to compile some of them into specific goals and strategies. And I wanted to pull out a few of them specifically related to land use, really to kind of set the context for um, some of the decisions that we're making. Um, so the first is, uh, you know, natural features are really an important component of, you know, Ann Arbor. A lot of people value them. They provide i- important, uh, biodiversity and ecology. Um, so in the context of a growing city, you know, we should have more dense, compact development that really mitigates the impacts on the natural features. Um, secondly, uh, we want to provide more supply of housing. So how, we can do that through creating more flexibility in the single-family districts, um, but also expanding where denser multifamily housing is allowed. Uh, and one of the callers really kind of referenced this in that, um, you know, really getting housing at, at scale in some of these multifamily areas. Um, the third is this idea of, uh, you know, com- complete communities, um, some call it fifteen-minute neighborhoods, twenty-minute neighborhoods. But really, the goal of creating walkable, connected neighborhoods, access to basic needs and amenities. Similarly, uh, aligning transit service with land development, you know, supporting density adjacent to either existing or planned transit um, really makes sense from a land use perspective. And then finally, diversify the economy to grow the non-residential tax base. Um, that's really important from an equity standpoint, thinking about different maintaining different types of jobs in the city, um, but also from affordability standpoint as well, thinking about Ann Arbor is very reliant on the residential tax base, which impacts, uh, the cost of housing as well. Um, so these are the districts that we, we shared with you previously. I wanted to just kind of revisit them, um, to talk about, a little bit more about the intent of the districts. Um, so we envision really three main residential districts, low-rise residential, mixed-use transition, and mixed-use hub that are really kind of changing in scale and intent, um, scale of building, but also scale of commercial activity. Um, it's almost like a small, medium, large. Um, and then employment, non-residential, which is really just kind of maintaining some of the existing zoning around industry, actually shrinking it in certain extent, um, but seeing some value in maintaining that. Um, so for the low-rise residential, the intent is really to create more flexibility in types of housing that's allowed in primarily single-family districts, um, building sizes that are scaled to the neighborhood. We've heard this a lot from the public and that they don't necessarily care how many units are in a building. It's more about a scale that's compatible with the neighborhood or even incremental change, but not exponential change. Um, and then provide for limited neighborhood commercial, uh, you know, that really is getting at some of those walkable neighborhoods that, that we talked about. Um, the mixed-use transition, uh, the intent is really to expand where denser multifamily housing is allowed by right. Um, again, creating walkable neighborhoods with access to amenities aligned with, with transit. Um, and also really providing that transition in scale from low-rise residential to mixed-use hub, which are really the highest level of density, um, adjacent to existing amenities, transit hubs. Um, these are also the areas that have possibility for large-scale change, particularly on surface parking lots and under your eyes lots. Um, but also can support important commercial districts and opportunities. You know, how can we expand on downtown from housing perspective to support businesses? How can we build off of some of the opportunities presented by the University of Michigan and some other proposed expansion? Um, and then finally, the employment non-residential, it's really maintaining some of the limited industrial space that exists in the city. Ann Arbor is never really an industrial city. It doesn't have huge industrial districts, but it does have some, um, and that there's some validity in keeping those, um, shrinking some of them, uh, in fact, transitioning some of the, the M zoning districts, particularly on South State. Like that makes more sense, um, to be part of some of the other districts, but still maintaining a portion of, uh, within the city, not entirely getting rid of it within the district. And, you know, we're really talking about two percent of the land parcel, or the, the total land area in, across the city. Um, and again, from an equity standpoint, thinking about balance in the types of jobs that are really located in the city. Um, I do want to note that the exit, there are thirty-four existing zoning districts, or potentially thirty-six, uh, and you always hear a different number. Um, and there's current, within the existing land use plan, there's ten-plus districts. Um, so really thinking of simplifying and providing more streamlined districts, um, in relation to kind of, you know, what currently exists. Um, so I'm gonna, we're gonna go into each one of these districts, provide a little more detail. As Brett mentioned, we have some discussion topics, and just kind of, kind of run through, through all of them. Kevin Heavely's on the, the call too, which will help, uh, discuss some of the economic piece. Um, and then get through all of it, and then we can come back and talk to some of these. So for the low-rise residential, there's really kind of two approaches. Um, the first approach is what we're calling, it's like gentle density, which is how we've been talking to the public, um, about um, these areas. It's really providing, again, incremental change, so going from thirty to thirty-five feet, one to four housing units, um, potential to reduce setbacks from minimum lot sizes, introducing some limited neighborhood commercial uses. Um, these are some examples, uh, uh, of that type of housing that's already exists in Ann Arbor. Um, this will create really kind of a clear distinction in scale with the mixed-use transitions, so saying that, you know, internal parts of neighborhood should be something different than some of the major corridors. Um, when we talked to the public, uh, in the October open house, we shared some visuals about what this could When we talked to the public uh in the October open house, we shared some visuals about what this could potentially look like. This is a completely hypothetical um neighborhood. It's not, not real, but based on uh some neighborhoods in the city. And just thinking about, you know, what the future could be um within the next twenty, thirty years. Um, so thinking about a variety of different housing types, be it an accessory dwelling unit or duplexes, triplexes, um cottage court type developments or subdivision of larger lot sizes, all things that are kind of within the same scale. But providing some more opportunities. The other approach i- is really kind of max it maximizing the residential impact. So these are some of the discussions that we had with you last time around um height and limit a number of units. So uh this approach could have a forty-eight foot height limit, which is what we talked about with you. Uh, no explicit limits on number of units. Um, again, potential to reduce minimum lot sizes, neighbor, limited neighborhood commercial. Um, so this would have less of a distinction in scale to mixed-use transition and can provide potentially um different scale buildings than are typical across the city, but there's more housing opportunity. So for discussion, and again, I'll I'll just kind of read through these, but we can come back to it. So really that gentle density versus maximizing housing opportunity, what should we prioritize? We also previously spoke to you about aligning some of these districts with existing building codes or typical construction methods. Interested in getting your take in on if you think that's still appropriate or if we should just uh let people decide um the cost levels of construction that they want to pursue. Um, thirdly, should we encourage the subdivision of lots of smaller scale buildings or the assembly of properties for larger scale developments, uh, which could potentially drive more housing, but also buildings at a different scale than what's typical? And then I I previously mentioned this, you know, residents have said that they don't necessarily care about the number of units. They care about the form of the building. So what is the best way to regulate the form? And there's a variety of different approaches we could take, you know, height is one way to do it, unit count is another. Um, setbacks, open space requirements, a lot of the residential districts within your current zone are controlled through lot area per dwelling unit, you know, is that the right approach? Or do we take a more um building code or fire code approach of thinking about the number of egresses, connections between the two for fire purposes, creating hallways and double-loaded corridors, which are really a much different type of building than is found typically um in some of the residential neighborhoods. So we can, there's a lot here, but we can come back and and discuss this. So the mixed-use transition district, it's really that next scale of building type, so from fifty-five to eighty feet. It allows for really neighborhood scale buildings and mixed-use style buildings focused on larger transit corridors, areas adjacent to mixed-use hubs. Um, again, these are some examples again that can be found in in Ann Arbor. The question, the disgusting question is, and this this came up um through the public comment as well, is, you know, if we're maximizing housing opportunity in low-rise residential, is there really necessity for transitional district? Um, does there some, need to be something within the future land use vision that kind of differentiates major corridors from typical residential streets or downtown? Um, so hopefully we can uh have a discussion about that. The next district of mixed-use hubs and I'll I'll say a little bit and then see if Kevin Hively or economist on the team can can provide a little more context. He sent a memo around as well that kind of defines uh some of the reasoning for for some of our approach here that hopefully you all were able to read. Um, but the mixed-use hub um is really that next scale uh of building and more intensity. Um, it really mixed use in nature, providing residential, commercial, office, lab, variety of different uses. Um, I I do want to point out that, you know, as we're talking about these districts, we in no way are saying um restricting really residential opportunities within these districts. It's really just kind of a vision of what these places could become. Um, so, you know, the the there are the, even though we're differentiating these districts somewhat from a a future land use vision, um, they're still really truly mixed use in nature, uh, at least the way that we're considering them and and ample opportunity for housing opportunities. But so the way that we've thought about um these districts, originally we had mixed-use hub as um just one district that encompassed downtown and all of the TC one districts. Um, I think we recognize that all the TC one districts do have different forms and different contexts. Um, so may make sense to slightly differentiate them and emphasize something one way versus the other. Um, so we've broken it down into what we're calling core innovation in retail. So it's really different emphasis and different flavors of uh mixed-use uh uh hub districts. Um, the core would be focused more on downtown and the Briarwood type area um in State and Eisenhower. Uh, really building off of uh what exists downtown, uh replicating that through redevelopment uh in the Briarwood and and State and Eisenhower area. Um, innovation would be focused more on Plymouth Road and the retail could be focused uh on some of the shopping centers adjacent to some of the highway exits. Uh, I may, Kevin, if you're there, um, provide some opportunity for you to provide a little more context and the reasoning for differentiating some of these districts.
Yeah, thanks. The uh, just to go back to the earlier slide, the comment was made about the the TC one. And essentially this is maintaining the idea of a TC one district. Um, but I think how the TC one evolves really becomes, comes down to a zoning question, which is the difference between like a land use place-based vision versus how it manifests itself from a zoning perspective. And as Jamie said, um, this also consolidates a number of M districts in, which were not necessarily consolidated into the original TC one, so there are a number of areas that have some industrial uh type uses or what I would call industrial services type uses, like auto body, et cetera, that would be incorporated into this that um could be converted to residential office lab, uh, what what have you. So can we go to the next one then? The argument for the innovation piece, uh particularly given where it's focused is uh first, a lot of these kind of activities already exist. Second is if Michigan does follow through with its innovation district. And frankly, if the city cannot work out a payment model, um, the activities that could be happening in the innovation district, some of them are going to want to leave the campus and move into areas that are proximate to the campus. And like I said, some of it already exists. And if you actually extend it uh outside of the city boundaries, you'll see that there's a number of Toyota research facilities and several other research, several other facilities on the other side out, just outside of the city boundary. And the idea here is that it would not prohibit residential, but it would uh manage um the residential and this residential in this district would actually be very beneficial. Uh, Cambridge, when it was doing the Kendall Square District, realized that it needed to put some residential into the district to um give it some vibrancy and to support the amenities because uh it became, it helped it make it a more attractive place for workers. But the emphasis is still on um employment uses and it's not just office, it's also lab space. It could, it could be hard, hard tech R and D space. It could be medical office space. It could be a range of uses such as that. And it makes it, it also helps the transition from kind of an urban suburban office park model to a more urban form. But again, it would be limited into that, into that Plymouth Road area, which also helps keep some of the traffic outside of the core of the city. Um, that, because it was, it's going to necessarily have to draw from outside of the city to for the workforce. The next one. And the retail argument is, and again, this is focused primarily on a couple of areas who are um also major uh taxpayers in the city. And the recognition is a couple of things. One, given the nature of control of the underlying ground, because a number of them are done through ground leases and many of them are ten, twenty, thirty years, the format of the concepts of the stores that hold control of those ground leases, that and then, and the fact that they are regional draws, meaning that they pull people in from outside of, from the townships and the greater Ann Arbor metropolitan area, that there needs to be some recognition that there needs to be something that is auto-supportive. And certainly over the next ten to twenty years. And one of the things that I would like to point out to you all, I know that's not been the history here, but um comprehensive plans can be amended. And if the direction changes significantly in terms of what retail concepts look like, housing concepts look like, you know, you can always go back in and revisit this, but certainly over, from what we know about over the next several ten to fit twenty years, a number of these uh districts that we've identified, the property is under control and is not likely to change anyway. And um we're just saying, recognize this fact and um for this type of retail model, as we go through the mixed-use transition hub that we talked about earlier, which is more according to the TC one model. Next. And then the employment non-residential, um, I don't, I do not anticipate the uh city of Ann Arbor getting a steel mill, a major chemical plant, anything of that kind of noxious type use. But there are a number of businesses, whether they're contractors, whether they are um small manufacturers, whether they are food product manufacturers, who need flexible industrial-type buildings that are low-cost. And one of the things that we've heard repeatedly is uh in addition to the concerns around residential gentrification, is also concerns around economic gentrification. And economic gentrification happens when places to do work and places to have businesses exceed the financial capacity of those bu- of businesses that are already there. And what we are saying is, think about that very hard. As Jamie pointed out earlier, it's two percent of the land area. There's been significant shrinkage of the M districts. Comes down to about two percent of the land area in the city to preserve these types of uses. And we can go into it in a much more elaborate way if we need to on this call. And uh, but what I can tell you, uh, commissioners is that in the work that Interface and Integrate have done, there have been a number of projects where cities have not managed the encroachment of residential into uh into what I would call commercial services, which is simple things like security offices where you need to park trucks, to warehousing, to food distribution, even for catering operations, where we have come in and done an industrial preservation strategy for them to try to maintain what they have that is left. And what this plan does is actually downsize the number of the industrial, the M districts and says you have a couple that are really just these. We don't anticipate massive noxious uses, like I said, like a steel mill. But there are going to be some potential uses, whether they have visual conflict, great visual conflicts or in the case of fruit production, and if you've ever been close to a craft brewery or a plant or somebody that makes salsa or somebody that makes chocolate, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. There are other things like smells, et cetera. And those, and those are just things that you want to anticipate being potential issues down the road. And that the police department gets called for as a nuisance complaint, then there's really nothing anybody can do. So that's just something that we want you to take into consideration. And then also coupled with the fact that there is a significant amount of the activity that University of Michigan is doing, like around medical devices and what are called hard tech, which are other things that are required, that are electronics basically and electronic technologies that are handheld or what might, what what have you, that require some form of manufacturing space. If you don't have it in the city, they will leave. And one of the major issues for the city is its property tax, it's its non-residential property tax base. Next.
So these are just
No, go ahead, Jamie, this is fine.
Yeah, I mean, these are, you know, these are some of the the questions that Kevin uh brought up. So, you know, what are the general thoughts on emphasizing innovation retail in specific locations within the mixed-use hub? Um, thoughts on maintaining a district that doesn't permit housing, which is again what is current, right, under current regulation? Um, and then also just interested in, you know, was South Industrial considered for TC one zoning when that process went through? Um, and if so, why was it not selected as appropriate?
Yeah, I I do want to point out one other thing, um, just as frame of reference as we, as we talk about this. There, there was some back-of-the-envelope modeling done regarding the potential number of housing units in the mixed-use transition district and in the innovation district. And that number on the low end, assuming only twenty percent redevelopment is sixteen thousand units. And if you've got a hundred percent development, redevelopment, it would be, it could be as high as eighty thousand units. So it's not like there's not capacity for new housing development. And that is just within these districts. We hadn't even get into the residential components of it yet, the low-rise residential side. So there, there is a potential for housing and as, you know, was brought up during the public discussion, um, some of these districts right now already allow housing and and you could go do it right now, even if it's difficult. Lots of places have PUDs. None of them are simple. Um, there needs to be a question about why are they not building housing in those market, in those locations when they can do it now?
Um, so finally, and this is the map, this is how these districts are applied uh across the city. Um, again, thinking like it's, it's really five districts is the way we're thinking about it. There's the low-rise, the employment, non-residential, mixed-use transition, the mixed-use hub, which has a few different uh flavors. And then the public, which has a few different flavors as well. So thinking of city, county, school, district, own properties, University of Michigan, parks and open space. Um, so the low-rise residential, the geography of it isn't really any different than existing, you know, typical neighborhoods in the city. Um, it's really providing some more flexibility within those districts to add some more housing. Um, again, the employment non-residential has shrunk in in certain areas, particularly on South State that really got folded into the mixed-use hub. Um, and concentrated on South Industrial, the research park. Um, we do have North Main called out. Um, we want to point out that we think that could potentially be a good place to transition to something else as well. Um, but there's some serious infrastructure and access issues with North Main. Um, that just dropping a bunch of new residents on North Main without making those investments um could be problematic. So any transition in the land use should also be done in coordination with infrastructure improvements there. The mixed-use transit transition, uh, you'll notice is on uh corridors, aligning with um existing or proposed transit improvements, also adjacent to some of the mixed-use hub areas. Um, we call out Concordia University as well, you know, based, you know, there's kind of an uncertain future there, but that could be an opportunity. Um, the mixed-use hub, the core again is downtown, actually showing expansion of downtown, particularly to the south, um, as well as south of South U slightly. Um, that we're showing it as a larger geography in the uh South State Eisenhower, um, actually picking up some of the industrial areas there, particularly um considering the the plans of AAA TA and the bus rapid transit um future improvements. Um, the innovation again focused on Plymouth corridor. We're actually expanded beyond the existing TC one. Um, just based on some of the types of development that exists there, thinking of some of the more research parks and and office complexes, kind of folding that those into the, to the um innovation district as well. Places like the Google campus. And then retail, again, focused on the shopping centers um and those corridors adjacent to to highways. So we've gone through a lot, a lot to discuss. But might take a break here and uh see if it makes sense to talk about the map or if you want to go back to some of the districts and have some of those discussions. Or if anyone else um wants to interject from the consulting team, if there's anything I I missed, I'm I'm sure I did. Um, but happy to to see where the conversation takes us.
Okay, um, thank you. I think it might be helpful to actually probably look at the questions. I think they framed Okay, um, thank you. I think it might be helpful to actually probably look at the questions. I think they framed the
Yeah.
There's there's just so many, right?
Yeah, yeah.
I think that it it may be helpful to actually go back to like the individual sections of the discussions.
Yeah.
And try to frame the discussion around those. Otherwise, I feel like I've been taking a lot of notes. There's quite a lot I'm sure everybody could say about it, but I think just being orderly and hitting these discussion topics might be the most accretive to, you know, getting valuable feedback from us in a structured fashion. So.
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
Okay, um so yeah, I thank you for pulling this one up. I think we could probably take, you know, tackle these four. We can start with Councilmember Dish.
Okay, great. So um thank you so much for all this work. This is really rich. It's really exciting. I'm really excited to get this first round of talking about it. So in terms of the discussion of the gentle density versus greater maximization of housing opportunities, um I I actually wanted to ask to, I guess I have one question actually. So my question is in terms of of this idea of the way to regulate building form, I wanted to ask about the implications of regulating building form through restricting units. And I wanted to ask if in your judgment, um and and it really also, this is a question open to staff, open to anyone with expertise on the planning commission. When we restrict units, do we provide an incentive for people to find profit, to maximize their profit by resorting to high bedroom counts? Because if so, my preference would be not to restrict units, whichever height we go with. Um I would like people to not have an incentive to provide high bedroom counts. Thank you, Mr. Leonard.
I think it's a good question. I think right now we limit units based on the size of lot. So um in our multifamily districts, for example, larger lots can accommodate more units, smaller lots cannot. In both cases, I would tell you that my experience for retrofitting houses that are used as multifamily, there is a desire to maximize the profitability of whatever units are permissible by by maximizing the number of units times the maximum number of bedrooms. So we see frequently in our community, our our four C district, which is a lot of converted uh large homes into multifamily, lots of development and modification, trying to maximize the number of bedrooms in those units. To be honest, sometimes that happens by a reduction in the number of units, but an increase in the number of bedrooms. But I don't find that our current framework, our current framework probably does incentivize maximizing the number of bedrooms. I think the only alternative where that wouldn't be the case off the top of my head is not to restrict the number of units nor the number of bedrooms into a development typology, which gets into more of like a purely, I would say, form based regulation rather than any use based regulation. I think the um just to share something we've been talking about with the project team right now.
That I'm sorry, you blanked out. I didn't realize you were talking.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, no problem. Uh one thing that I would say is that if you look at the history, um there might be a commissioner on here who recalls some of this. Um there um there was a lot of conversation, there's been a lot of conversation for a long period of time in the community about what are the right levers and guardrails in order to have impetus into that. I think that as the city increased the minimum lot size requirements of multifamily housing over decades of regulation, largely probably to have an adverse impact on the or in quote encroachment of student rentals into areas of the city that weren't previously student rentals. That has had the effect where it incentivized property owners to consolidate properties, combine properties, build bigger structures so that they could get to the minimum lot size, maximize the number of units, maximize the number of bedrooms. I think potentially by maintaining an ultimate cap on the number of units in a district in conjunction with the number of bedrooms or occupants, it would have maybe the opposite impact. Whereas if we no longer were governing a minimum lot size by a certain size, but rather you can put up to X number of units on that parcel regardless of its size. I think that has the potential to not drive so much consolidation to meet a magical lot size requirement. And instead, it might result in more housing or smaller gather, smaller counts of housing on smaller parcels. I don't know what that'll do to bedrooms, frankly. I think as long as there's space to maximize bedrooms per unit, I think that's going to continue to be a frankly, a profit driver for people in the rental business.
Okay, so that was a lot. But and no, I'm and I'm 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 going to try to 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 be that I followed. And um so I had been thinking that I don't like the increased minimum lot sizes. Not because I didn't want people to assemble parcels so that they could create something, but I don't like them because they because they have affected actually people's ability to put multifamily housing. And so we corrected some of that. So in my mind was that I thought we should decrease the minimum lot size as a cure for the damage that was done by doing that. But you seem to be, so maybe you think that we should do that too, but you you seem to be saying to me in your response that the the regulating units is another way to get at the problems that were created by the increased uh minimum lot sizes. Am I following?
Yeah, I think, I mean, there's there's so many scenarios, but take uh take a property now in our our four C district, think of a camp, a nearby campus neighborhood. Many of those properties do not meet the minimum lot size to maximize the number of dwelling units or to even get to four dwelling units on those properties. So if we maintain that lot size, there if lot sizes somehow calibrated to the number of units, I think we're going to continue to have pressures on and adjusting the size of those units to maximize their profitability because from from our, to be clear, from our regulation, a unit, a six bedroom unit and an efficiency unit are the same house. We don't regulate by bedrooms, we regulate by dwelling units. And we've talked about that before, but that's our current regulatory framework. If we were to get rid of minimum lot sizes and maintain a cap on the number of units, I think that that would open up some space for properties that have one, two or three units now and potentially increase to four units on their existing lots because there's no longer that regulatory barrier to do that. If we said we eliminated the minimum lot size and there is no cap on the number of units, time will tell, but I think it increases the economy of scale pressure to assemble lots and build a twenty unit apartment building as opposed to three, four unit apartment buildings or five, four unit apartment buildings, excuse me, get my math right. Because um it's how a lot of housing is built, there's an economy of scale to manage that, construct it, own it, finance it, that might be simpler than building five, four units. So the, to build five, four units, I think is more of a we think that the scale and rhythm of more smaller structures makes more sense. I think to get rid of the number of units is to say more housing is the most important thing. Scale doesn't matter if if there is a twenty unit apartment building mid block surrounded by two, three unit houses. That's great because we've we've managed to get twenty units there. End of story.
Got it. Uh that's super helpful, Mr. Leonard. Kind of a uh challenging question. One of the things and and um Commissioner White, I will come to you in just one second. In response to that particular concept, I was thinking about, there's plenty of landlords that love to try to squeeze in as many beds as possible, right? That that just maximizes value for rental income from a rental standpoint. From a unit mix standpoint, mostly the two bedroom, two baths is um adaptable type of unit for families or young professionals, whereas the six bedroom um model is generally more for students. And so I almost think that when you regulate unit count, you're almost more incentivizing unit types that might, uh basically what you're going to get is, you know, higher bedroom counts. Um and again, like so so you may get more student oriented um developments. And so I am of the mindset that not necessarily like unit count regulations make, uh you know, the most amount of sense from that standpoint. And uh but that that being said, obviously, there's uh a lot that goes into it. As as you said, is is it the type of building of like a longer block um relative to smaller structures, what's that's what's more desirable? I think it's difficult to be normative throughout. Um but all of that said, uh I just wanted to kind of, you know, put in there that, you know, we've done some, you know, market research about what's the most adaptable type of unit generally tends to be two bedroom, two baths. And then um, you know, when we regulate unit count, you tend to get more beds within a single unit kind of thing. So and then there's obviously also like the dwelling, right, uh regulation as well, which again, it sounds like I'm hearing that, you know, the housing, getting as much housing as possible is kind of a large priority to help affordability uh just based on kind of the heat maps of the public feedback sessions that we saw. So um but yeah, Mr. Leonard, in response to that, and then we can go to Commissioner White.
I think another, uh just another way to maybe think about it is we can, we can regulate scale by number of units. I think it's imperfect for some of the reasons that you talk about because we can, if if we have a uh a limit and we put a number, a limit on bedrooms and or occupants and we put a limit on peep on number of units, that is one way to just manage us the physical scale of a building. That is not the only way. You know, there are other ways to do that. We could say as long as the building is no closer than three feet to the front property line, three feet to any side or rear property line and no taller than seventy feet, we don't care what happens in that. That's a totally another way to regulate scale. So um I think I think this confusion is a good example of how the number of units isn't perfect at regulating scale. Maybe it's not the best way, but it is a way that we have done that and can be used in the future to uh control the overall size of buildings in in a way.
Yeah, gotcha. No, thank you for the clarification. And again, I think simplicity is obviously also a value set to drive here as well. So with that, Commissioner White, your thoughts?
So I was trying to be closer to Mr. Leonard's comments uh from Commissioner Dish because I was uh thinking of the apartment complex that is on Hoover. And so you've got two sets, you have one on uh West Hoover and then you have one on East Hoover and they both sit adjacent to single unit structures, like right inside those streets. And it doesn't seem to be problematic. Um and I know that that they might not be forty eight feet high, they might be thirty five. I don't know when they got built and under what regulations they are, but they feel fairly okay in the neighborhood as I, you know, interact with the neighborhood. It's not my neighborhood, so I can't speak for that. But so that was something that I was trying to think about um as I was listening to that discussion. And it is in Julie's neighborhood, so she might have thoughts um before I see the floor. The other thing here for me is I am, I think I've lost the subject a little bit in this part of the conversation because if our goal is to maximize housing and our state is at its legislative body looking to make duplexes um available in all residential districts by right. It feels to me, and and this is just my feeling from the conversations I've been in, that we seem to be wanting to protect a specific type of housing. And that feels discordant to me from the um narrative that we've received from council as well as the conversation that we've had at the planning table. And I and I say that because just in the visual that we were presented um in these slides, which changed from our conversation last Wednesday at the steering committee uh to today, we have approach one and approach two. And in the reality of our city, approach one sits already beside approach two. There are single unit uh housing um that sit across from or next to forty eight foot units of housing or multi, multi family housing. So I I am, I guess I am confused is the way that I was processing um what what we are being presented uh here and especially given all of the clarification that has been made today around land use versus zoning. So if clarity can be given, uh that would help me um as I as I sit here and process this information, having seen it already and now seeing it again.
Thank you. Um let's go to Commissioner Wetherby, Councilmember Dish, then to Leonard.
Uh I'm happy to have Leonard Leonard go in response to that if that would be helpful.
Just real quick, Commissioner White, uh yeah, just to be clear, um I don't, I don't we've been having a lot of conversations with our community about all the issues that you just that you just mentioned. And one of the things that I've had a lot of conversations with members of the public is frankly, at times, density being a bad word. Um I think some people um can hear that term and they presume bad things will come to their home and their investment based upon that. I'm sure you've heard that account. Yeah, I'm sure you've had that experience with people as well. And so I think one of the themes that has been happening through the conversation with this planning process is talking about yeah, our city council has made it very clear. They want density added in all areas of the city, including your neighborhood, whatever person I am talking to, right? And part of that though is is also having a conversation with them about what that scale means. And I don't think you're proposing this either, but there are those that see things that are happening downtown and they're saying like, are you proposing a twenty story neighborhood in my in in my neighborhood? And typically the answer to that is, well, no, probably not in the middle of your neighborhood. However, much more density is appropriated along some of the transit corridors. And so within that, I just want to be clear, I don't think that there is a perfect number that uh or approach that is going to, you know, not everybody's going to agree on it. And so um based on the conversation we had at the steering committee, we we heard, we heard that loud and clear. Um we had been speaking for myself and and the consultant team, we've been really relying on a lot of those conversations and some of the things we've been sharing about a or response to those conversations with the community that uh an appropriate scale of density in these neighborhoods might be uh, an appropriate scale of density in these neighborhoods might be thirty five feet and up to four units. That doesn't have to be the answer. We heard that at the steering committee, and so we wanted to just have a little bit of conversation here to highlight that and say, just because that's the conversation we've been having, doesn't mean it's the right conversation. Um, that it's the right conclusion, I should say, and we wanted to provide that. I mean, I think as some, as we get to one of the other discussion items, if we're to go to forty eight feet and no limit on the number of units, I think the question does make a lot of sense. I, I see less of a distinction for our transit district, our transit corridors than what we're proposing there, which it, that's fine. That's kind of the direction we want to get to. But I would say as far as protecting housing, um, I guess, I guess I'll take that. Maybe I, I am coming at an approach to protect a certain character of housing. But I think that going to increase the height in most of those districts and the maximum number of units for like sixty percent of our land use across the city is a pretty good step forward for adding housing potential in our community. It's not as far as going higher and unlimited, but I think it's a reasonable increase in the context of uh some people who are really fearful about the impact of change to their neighborhoods and investments. So um, so I, I'm sorry that this is adding confusion to that. That's, I just wanted to sort of narrate a little bit how I've been working with a team to try to respond to that conversation at the steering committee and what's been happening over the last year as we try to find these trade offs and balances about what is the, how far and, you know, how far is, should we go? How far is too far? How far is not far enough? And as it relates to the future land use um versus zoning, the, the easiest thing for me is to adopt a plan that says all of the R one districts shall be modified into a new R one with this height limit and this reason. That is the, that's the easiest thing for you as the planning commission, the city council and staff for sure. The more these future land use maps just convey a character uh with, we, we're not exactly sure if we're talking one zoning district or two zoning districts, or is it gonna be TC one and something else? That is also fine. It's just gonna mean a little bit more work for us on the implementation side. So I'm sure that doesn't set, you know, satisfy your frustration, but I just, I just wanted to share how, why these two approaches have come up. We were listening and we wanted to sort of replicate that conversation here to see uh what folks are, are thinking about before the planning commission is ultimately having to make that decision as all.
Gotcha. Thank you, Mr. Leonard. Uh, let's go on to Commissioner Weatherby, then Councilmember Dish.
Okay, so uh, one of the things that has been very handy in this discussion is so many of these pictures are from my neighborhood. So I have a pretty good idea of how, how they uh look and what it and I think a couple of points. So one, working on pretty extensively on R four C zoning. You can make a lot of decisions, but it's like the squeezy ball. When you squeeze one side, you know, the other side pops out. And um there were a lot of regulations in R four C. Now, we've made a lot of changes, but it turned out actually parking ended up being a huge driver, even though it was, you know, in theory, kind of a, a minor piece of the R four C zoning. But it ended up being a huge driver of the form and bedroom counts and unit counts. And um, so I do think in some ways, the more we try to restrict or be really specific, I think the possibility of unintended consequences gets really magnified almost. Um, that, that kind of being a little less prescriptive actually may end up with better, better buildings. And though, and that better is, you know, a building that works for the people around it and the people in it. And, and so that's not helpful, particularly in this discussion because we want to get to, you know, tell me what I can build or what the neighbor can build. But I do think that, that sometimes being more prescriptive does not help us get where we want to be. And then the other um the other thing, when I first saw this, like gentle density versus maximizing housing opportunities. So uh, in, in the pictures, one of these buildings that was in your pictures was in the maximizing housing opportunities. So that's the Hoover in green. Full block, you know, four story building, maximizing housing opportunities. The other was in a gentle density, which is a four or six unit, I think a six unit, six bedroom each unit house shape um on a lot with, with setbacks. And that would be kind of the gentle density. I think that is a, I think from the point of view of living around those two buildings, which are right near me. There's not a, a big difference from the, the perspective of the neighbors or or how those buildings are experienced from the sidewalk or the number of, I mean, there's, there's a big difference in the number of people, but because they're where they are and it's not like the Truman Show where everyone leaves at the same time in the morning and the traffic is bad. And, you know, they're, they're very, they kind of affect the neighborhood in the same way. And so when I look at gentle density versus maximizing housing opportunities, my how I feel about it is yes, and that, that those are not in opposition, that those can exist. And, and, and maybe if there's a way that we can get them so that they do exist. Because I feel like one of the things and, and in Ann Arbor, we don't have a very distinct visual style. We don't have all the houses aren't the same. They're not all red brick. This is or that's, and that is kind of our, it's kind of a great thing about Ann Arbor. We are not going to be a beautiful coherent city with all the same streetscapes. But actually, our diversity is really cool, and it means you can have a person living in a house next to a four or six or eight story building, and it works. And so trying to kind of maximize that diversity and maximize the opportunities for, you know, smaller infill buildings, I do like that you don't have to assemble uh parcels because I think that's, it's not what people usually want to do or often don't want to do, and it leads to there's another building two doors down from me that is a really awkward use of two parcels because of the setbacks, because of the, it didn't maximize housing. It didn't maximize what could happen on that lot, and now it's just kind of weird. It's a weird building, and people experience it in a strange way, both internally and from around the building. So I think for me, um, I like the diversity. I like the more opportunities. I like the gentle density and maximizing housing and kind of make this as the opportunities as great as we can, and maybe that means keeping a streetscape because the people all like that street state scape, and they live there and they sell the houses and people buy the houses. But it could also mean, you know, gentle density, or it could mean redoing an entire block. And, and I realize that's kind of a that's a harder, a harder sell, but um I think it's actually a form that has worked in Ann Arbor, and I would like to see continuing to work in Ann Arbor rather than just say, oh, we only want big block apartment buildings, or we only want single family housing, or we only want, but I like the diversity of types.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Weatherby, Councilmember Dish. And then we are gonna try to wrap this one up because I think we have four sets of discussions. So um, two more comments max.
Yeah, we want to move on, so I'll be very quick. I just want to clarify that I was addressing point four on this discussion. And what motivated me to want to address point four is that I have a concern about the production of housing that is not readily adaptable. And I think Mr. Leonard gave me one example, uh, uh, sorry, one answer to the about adaptability question, which was you don't necessarily end up with bill, uh, wait, housing forms that are difficult to adapt by uh limiting units. I feel like um Chair Lee gave me the opposite answer. If I understood Chair Lee, what, what you stated was that two bedroom, two bath units are adaptable to young professionals and six bedroom units are oriented more towards students. And you seem to suggest that when we regulate unit counts, we do tend to get more six bedroom units. That is the thing I would like to avoid. So, and so I am not trying to say I want to resolve this now. I'm just saying that there's a discussion on the table. There's and, and, and obviously further conversation can happen about the best way for us to increase density, and I have not spoken to the question of how it should be, but increase density while producing a diversity of housing, while producing housing that can house young professionals as well as students. And that can be forty eight feet high and a block long, you know, I mean, I'm, I'm agnostic on that. I'm, I'm not trying to address that. I was addressing how to regulate building form in such a way as we end up with greater diversity of housing, by which I do not mean, uh, uh, I'm not talking about mixed apartments in with single unit housing. I am talking about housing that can be used by people other than those who are willing to live with five roommates. So.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, no, tha- thank you for that. And um, Mr. Leonard, if you have a direct response to that, we'll hit that and we'll uh.
No, it's just gonna try to wrap up, um, maybe what uh I and the team are hearing um on these discussions. One, I'm hearing maximizing uh housing opportunities is more important than gentle density. Uh, despite uh Commissioner Weatherby um expert straddling the fence that both are good. Um, zoning doesn't mandate things, it allows things. So if we wanted to provide both those opportunities, we sort of have to lean into the maximizing housing opportunities even at risk of not achieving a gentle density. So uh, that's one, that's one thing I'm hearing that is maximize housing opportunities. I think embedded in that is maximize housing opportunities in such a way that we are not driving by our zoning regulations, a configuration of units. That is, how can we open up housing opportunities for uh adaptation, market demand, understanding that right now and in some geographies, the market demand might be six bedrooms. It might be eight bedrooms. Um, it might be two bedrooms. And so uh, trying to, I guess what I'm hearing is a desire to uh, get out of the way a little bit to let the market respond to those items. And I am hearing some combination of number four and gentle density being my conversations that are the summary that I was saying that we've been having with the public about um I, I guess frankly, a protection of a certain kind of housing scale in existing neighborhoods is less important to this group. Then quantity of housing. And is that a fair summary of what I'm hearing from the committee?
Um, I, I think that is fair. I also wanted to make sure to, I'm, I'm gonna try to chime in just on these four points really briefly as well. For me, it's not necessarily this, you know, dichotomy of gentle versus maximizing, but rather just kind of um, we'll call it smart missing middle housing, right? Gradients on corners. So having quadplexes on the corners with duplexes on the center, things that kind of like graduate up and that makes sense uh just from that standpoint. Um, I'm really thinking back to the book uh Missing Middle Housing by uh Daniel Perolak, I think that's his name. Um, and just having read through that, that kind of influenced me on how uh, yeah, restrictive our current, uh, you know, Euclidean zoning is going to be on uh these kinds of your duplexes, quadplexes. I just think that it, it's not like, let's drop these, you know, I, I don't necessarily me personally agree with like maximize housing in form, uh, you know, at the cost of a good, beautiful, equitable, you know, urban environment. Now, we can say that the access to housing is equitable in general, but there's also beautiful architecture. I just don't want a big square with like a massive block, right? So to that extent, uh, with Commissioner Weatherby's comment, just regarding, you know, um, I think she was saying that, you know, maybe this democratizing housing would encourage more, you know, smaller scale buildings rather than kind of the larger ones. Um, it's kind of what I heard, but also we should maximize housing. Um, for me, it's also an element of what is politically and just administratively possible. Uh, what's the kind of easiest way for us to achieve this, right? Um, like a, a whole revamping could be politically uh difficult. Um, so from my standpoint, on number one, to me, it's like smart missing middle housing gradients. Uh, maybe that's accomplished from like a form based. I don't want to certainly, you know, necessarily uh implement that. But uh, yeah, I don't necessarily agree with, you know, unit count limitations because it's like beds versus units, right? I, I don't mind smaller bedroom units. Um, uh, that, that might be something. So uh, I'll, I'll get to number four in a second. Number two, should the district be designed to align with existing building codes and typical construction types? Or should they have the flexibility? I mean, I, I do think that there should be rationale regarding heights and things of that nature, whatever we decide to regulate by. Um, I think I said forty eight feet just because if you look at all of the affordable housing that's come through, um, you know, on our end, they're, they're usually four stories, forty eight feet, because that's what you can build with, with construction type. Now, if the developers want to build type one A concrete and steel on a four story, you know, all the power to them, I mean, probably has a larger carbon footprint overall, uh, just from an embodied carbon standpoint. Um, but yes, I think there should be rationale behind lining building codes. Uh, it's a Michigan building code relative to, you know, specific districts. Um, the question about encouraging subdivisions of lots with smaller scale buildings or assembly of properties, um, I don't know that we can be like that. That's kind of the market to determine, right? Assembly is hard. And, you know, uh, often more risky, so the rewards and the payoff needs to be greater, um, just from like the private market standpoint. Um, from the public side of protecting um health, safety, general ware, welfare, I think there's an element of smaller scale buildings, more diversity of architecture, more porosity, things of that nature may have a benefit. It's gonna be a trade off, but I just don't think that from, you know, a policy side, the imposition of this normative, should it be smaller scale or larger scale? I, I, I'm struggling with that question. I, I really am. I don't know the correct answer. The last uh item, what's the best way to regulate building form to me, um, whether it's height or form base makes more sense than unit counts, for example. Um, again, maximize beds versus unit counts. Um, you know, I'm not, uh, you know, setbacks or nah. Um, but I, I, I would think uh height would be kind of like the, the big driver for me, just to create kind of like a legibility of what, you know, shadow casting is a big thing for me. So I just wanted to make sure that I'm giving, you know, very clear, concise, uh, one, two, three, four uh feedback. Mr. Leonard, uh, probably final point before we move on.
Uh, no, thank you. Um, maybe we'll move on to the next one. I just do, I want to put one note on this one. Um, I don't know the answers. I'm not raising this, but just one thing is that uh the majority of our residential neighborhoods have a certain infrastructure that's based on a certain density. And I don't right now, we, our requirements specify, for example, one type of water main when you're in an R one and R two district, and we're, we require a larger water main when you're in our four district. Um, a conversation to happen is part of maximizing housing opportunities is we might start blurring that line. We might start finding in neighborhoods, the density is going to demand a higher level of infrastructure. So we will start that conversation as part of this with um other entities at the city, but I just want to make you aware of it. And I want to be clear, our plan as it exists is not immune for that. We have a lot of infrastructure needs across the city, along corridors, along uh TC one areas. So it's not unique, but it could elevate the needs if we start opening up a higher dense potential maximum density within these um otherwise previously limited by total number of units areas. So that's something we'll be mindful of, but I, I feel good about it. Consultancy, unless you have any questions, maybe we could move on to the next uh discussion.
Sure. Um, and do you think it's, it's useful to kind of skip through the mixed use transition for now and talk about the other of districts and employment non-resident? I'm assuming there's gonna be more conversation there, and then we can go back to the
Yeah.
addition. Okay.
Yep.
So I'll leave it here.
Okay, um, and anybody want to kick us off? I, I do have a whole list written here, so I'm happy to kick us off too. Oh, kick us off. Okay. Uh, what are general thoughts on emphasizing innovation retail in specific location within cities? Um, I think it's difficult to be um assuming or imposing like the sixty, seventy percent kind of requirement, right? assuming or imposing like the sixty, seventy percent kind of requirement, right? Um, from like a developer side, for me to try to pencil, oh, sixty percent office is required, but that's not what the market calls for right now is going to impede development, right? Um, I'm gonna say, well, I think multifamily works here, but if I'm required to do office, I can't lease the office right now. I mean, office market is at about eighty-eight percent occupancy, so bit of a challenging proposition to say like, this is what we're going to impose. Now, that being said, retail, I think it is, there's a, uh, and I'm always kind of trying to center this around the health, safety, general welfare kind of concept of like, how are we promoting that through this regulatory um, framework? The important, I think it's important to emphasize exciting sidewalks in these areas, um, which means retail. And retail success is based on function of sales to rent, so we call it the health ratio RTS. Um, if we require it, maybe landlords underwrite it as a loss leader while building the stuff that, you know, or or we have a great enough critical mass. I think retail only really works when there's, you know, critical mass and people are able to kind of like daisy chain trips. So I do think retail, um, in areas uh, are always going to look to kind of excite the sidewalk to a certain extent, um, create a little bit of vibrancy. Uh, I always think eyes on the streets are a good thing, right? Cause, uh, you know, creates passive security, et cetera. Um, and I think by requiring a certain level of, you know, I I always kind of look at the standard on on Packer and think, oh, man, I would have loved to see downtown, you know, stretch a little bit further uh, down south, uh, past Williams. But unfortunately, that's not what we really get. Um. Now, also, there is, I think, innovation offices normally wanna locate where there's exciting, vibrant access to amenities, such as different types of retail entertainment experience, and they also wanna look at where they can attract talent and retain it. So by creating kind of like more exciting retail environments, you kind of already invite innovation. Um, but I just think there's problems that arise when you say, I need sixty percent of the building to be office or, you know, an innovation use. And so I think that-
Chairman, that's not what's meant by that. It's it's the, it's the parse, it's the acreage of the land. It's not the percentage of the building use.
Okay, gotcha. Well, thank you. I appreciate that uh, clarification. Um, I I was misinformed on-
Because I I would totally agree with you. That's a non-starter. That doesn't, first of all, it doesn't give work.
Yeah, agree.
If you're talking about lab space. It's it's the percentage of the acreage.
Okay, yeah, understood. I I do think that, uh, you know, I've said at the very onset that I think economic diversification is a large part of, um, you know, creating resilience in our overall. I mean, we are, you know, super economically dependent on our anchor institutions, so um, requiring retail on the ground floor, um. I think, uh, just forces people to kind of underwrite it as a loss leader. Um, it just, uh, but the fact is, if you underwrite it and you say, I'm gonna charge fifty-two triple net for it, it just, it's not gonna lease if, you know, somebody has to, is they're taking a big risk by opening up a retail store. Um, so that that's kind of my thought process. I think we still wanted to have, you know, continued flexibility. Um, the general thoughts that maintaining a district does not permit housing deserves a diversity of commercial industrial types. I think only in so long as there is a conflict of like um, health, right, and safety, um, we don't really have manufacturing. We don't really have these kind, you know, I mean, we, I I think Mr. Leonard and I had this conversation when we were uh, doing a clean room on the northeast side, right? This is a semiconductor, uh, technically, you know, or you could call it a laboratory, but it's a very, very clean type of use. And so, um, I don't, I I'm more on the side of flexibility, um, of preserving flexibility. Um, not necessarily like the not permitting housing, but in so long as there aren't uses that are again detrimental, um, to health and safety of resi. Uh, and then I don't know about South Industrial, whether it was considered for TC one rezoning. I was largely, or I was pretty much absent for that. Um, but I would think that South Industrial has, um, some good promise. I would think there are, um, you know, because of its proximity to the railroads, um, that there you might face kind of, uh, you know, some type of, whether it's environmental, subso, you know, uh, issues. I have no idea, but I I can't really answer that question, but I just want to make sure I hit all three, so. Um, that's, that's to kind of kick it off as far as like the three discussion points. And again, Kevin, uh, Mr. Hively, thank you for the clarification. That imposition, I just misunderstood that, so, thank you.
Yeah, I just, one other comment regarding the retail, the the retail part that we're talking about is really kind of this auto-supported retail, which is essentially two areas of the city where Arborland is an example of it, where they are regional destinations. Um, the, I think the mixed-use hub, whether retail is mandated on the ground floor, I I agree with you. I think that's got some issues with it, um, because you can't put retail everywhere. So that's, that's just to clarify that one as well.
Oh, gotcha, yes. And so I I actually prepared my comments based on the PDF that was shown, or it was like posted. And so this is actually, that question about innovation and retail was attributable to the mixed-use hub, but it looks like it was actually collapsed into this. So that, that's my bad. Sorry. Um, but yeah, with that, let's go to council member Dish, and I I hear you about um, Westgate, Arborland, the two little zones, um, and we can kind of circle back to that, but but let's let, uh, council member Dish.
So, uh, I want to focus on North Main, but I will quickly say that, yes, South Industrial was discussed in the context of the TC one rezonings. And there was, I think staff would better speak to why it was ruled out. Um, but, so, I understand that the, um, employment district, what is it called again? The the, well, okay, it doesn't matter, but the the, oh yeah, employment non-residential. I understand that it's two percent, but North Main is has been recognized forever as both a key gateway into the city and as, um, a corridor that currently really sort of digs a chasm between downtown and, you know, significant residential areas of the city and a number of parks and the Huron River. Um, so in the twenty thirteen North Main Corridor Project, it's really interesting. The language that they use to describe, they they break North Main into several areas, but one area is right where you come off fourteen and you drive. You know, you very quickly hit a forty-five mile an hour speed limit, which very quickly drops to thirty miles an hour. So that, they they focus on that area. That's one area that's really important. They talk about other areas for development. They kind of foresee the the Broadway development, the old DTE property that's now going on, except that that development exceeds their hopes for that area because it is mixing hotel, parkland, a critical linkage to the Argo livery, um, and residential. So that's gonna be great, and the people who wrote the North Main Corridor Plan would be really psyched about that. They also, um, thought about or visioned the expansion of Argo, Argo livery, which has happened. And it was funny that they said that Argo livery exceeds its capacity, so we should expand it. Well, it exceeds its capacity even more now that we expanded it, but it is a delightful amenity. And I think if properly managed, which we are really getting there, really, really made great strides in that, it 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 remains a a gem. So, um, as the representative of this place and as someone who has looked at, you know, the many iter documents, I do not think it is appropriate to have North Main populated by warehouses. I think that if we want it to be lively, and we do, and we want uh, MDOT to spend money on making it pedestrian and bicycle friendly, I think it needs to have denser residents. Um, it it is a, it is a unique and key part of the city, and right now it is poorly used, and I think, um, a visioning on a future land map, land use map of that area as employment non-residential is going in the wrong direction.
Can I comment on that quickly? I I I think the, I, so one of the dilemmas of doing maps like this is you can't get into the nuances. I think in general, the corridors in the city should be focused more on residential type uses. It, in this case of this area, it's more of the interior roads, the parts that look like an office park and an industrial park. It's those parcels that are offset back. Um, versus just, but the, I do think the corridor should be uh, across the city should be focused on s- some residential density. It makes the most sense for a lot of reasons is as, uh, Brett said, there are gonna be some infrastructure issues in some places. So from that perspective, I'm just concerned from a city tax-based perspective, um, and from a mix of employment perspective, that depending upon how this unfolds, you end up running a a bunch of jobs that were, could or would be in the city, may not be there.
Got it. Thank you. Mr. Leonard?
Um, Commissioner Dish, I've been fighting with our consultant team over the North Main Corridor for some time. Um, they, um, agree with you. Um, they, uh, recognize that, I think for all the reasons you're talking about, it's, uh, it's a gateway into the city. It is, um, it's a bit of a wound of land use, um, next to some of the most wonderful parks, open spaces, natural features, high-volume traffic, uh, recreation resources that are used in the city. Um, and it turns out that some of my basis for, uh, I had, I had approached that corridor particularly from the lens of residential would be a disaster because accessibility there is awful. And adding excess and adding residential there is likely going to increase, um, trips in totality. However, uh, they're going to residential trips happen a at a lower rate than industrial or commercial um, does. And so I think long-term, uh, it to my mis- originally misguided argument, I think what you're talking about makes a lot of sense to memorialize that particular corridor. Um, one, I don't know that it's ever going to achieve must much tax-based benefit for the city because it is so poorly restricted, access is so challenging, um. With all due, uh, optimism or potential for the city entering into conversations with MDOT about reconfiguring that road, it's a long-term horizon and at best, probably lowering the transportation demand on that corridor to something more residentially focused than industrial or business-focused makes a lot of sense. Um, so you're right, I was wrong. Uh, uh, as far as TC one, I just want to, uh, address, um, it it was, it was discussed, um, s- you know, just a reminder with TC one for this discussion, since, uh, twenty twenty-one, um, we have created the district, rezoned, um, over three hundred and fifty lots. Um, over a square mile of land in the city has been zoned TC one. Um, and we don't have a development on that. So, um, so when we're talking about, um, when we're talking about mixes of, um, you know, I, that just, I thought when when Commissioner Lee and Kevin were talking about, Kevin Hively were talking about the balance of office to residential, um, when we're talking about the TC one corridor, it was discussed, but ultimately the planning commission, when they, um, forwarded, uh, the TC one, they recommended four corridors, and that was not one of the corridors that was, that was recommended. Um, it was discussed, but it wasn't included in the same prioritization as the other four corridors that we have now rezoned. Um, and then, you know, I think one of the things that, um, that is driving our conversations about this employment zone, it's driving our conversations frankly, a little bit about the retail centers at the interchanges, is this notion of tax-based diversification. Um, I want to be clear, like, when we look at retail, Arborland, what have you, I don't see those as the greatest tax-based generators, but one of the things that they are beneficial for is their diversity of tax base. And the more that we shift to residential, even if it's commercial rental, we are putting more and more of our tax base onto the shoulders of residential land uses. And, um, South Industrial, other industrial districts, I I I I can't sit here and promise things, but I think about examples like Sartorius. Sartorius is building, has built a new facility in the research park. That is in an area that is, doesn't allow housing. Um, if we were to allow housing there, um, what is the potential for that site to be developed for housing? Maybe not, because it doesn't have the placemaking that we've talked about, but maybe it does get built as housing because for all the reasons we're talking about here, people want to live close to their, to their places of employment, and that's great. But then that means we're not gonna have the opportunity for Sartorius to consolidate operations and invest a hundred million in a job creating business here in the city if that land use has foregone. And, uh, coming back to Commissioner Weatherby's thought, I mean, I I definitely think we can over-regulate this, right? Um, there's no promise that even if we do that, the next hundred million dollar of investment can come. But it is a decision that we can think about, whether it's the South Industrial Corridor, whether it's Research Park, whether it is North Main or not. Um, falling onto that sword. Um, uh, I think it's a real question. Um, yes, by opening up other corridors for residential land use, I think it does increase the chance of more housing being built. Maybe we don't care about where we get plumbing supplies. Maybe we don't care about where we get our auto body fixed, whether it happens in the city or not. Maybe we, maybe it's not a lot of employment compared to other employment fa- places. But, um, but cities are by their nature multidisciplinary places that draw people, draw different activities, and, um, I I think we're talking about our housing crisis a little bit because there's so much pressure on it that it has the ability to really overtake a lot of aspects of who we are. And again, I don't want to say that two percent is significant in land use, uh, to drastically change that, but those are, it's a kind of balance that we're that we're presenting, and that's some of the rationale for why we're approaching it in this way.
Got it. Thank you, Mr. Leonard. Um, let's go to Mr. Hively, Mr. Chen, and Commissioner White. And we are reaching time.
Oh, you can, um, you could, Chairman, you can skip me for now.
Oh, all right. Sounds good. Ms. Chen.
Oh, I was just going to just continue on Brett's comment about Sartorius, which is in this image, the Flex Tech's tech image, and just comment that the the one to its left is Zingerman's Bakehouse, and that Zingerman has a whole constellation of food production, uh, facilities, some of which are not able to locate in our harbor. So we are thinking, you know, just about existing businesses even, and as Brett says, like their ability to operate within the city, or their inability to operate, uh, within the city. Um, and things like, you know, the hardware store that relocated, um, to this area as well, like there are, there are not that many places to go.
Yeah, thank you, yeah, because that picture's from Pittsfield Township. So appreciate that, though. How's that? Um, yeah, Commissioner White and Mr. Hively.
Uh, just a couple of things. Uh, one, um, was a little confused, again, sorry, I, apparently I am confused tonight. Uh, with, uh, the comment around Sartorius, let's stay there. Uh, about twelve hundred feet from their facility is a proposed, uh, affordable housing development that would front on state. So I'm, I'm just really having a hard time reconciling what, what it is we're trying to achieve by locking these things into non-housing. The other thing that is a little, um, hard for me to put, um, wrap my mind around is if these, uh, we, we have a large market leader in our market that has a significant capital stack. So when, what was it, Edward Brothers, uh, the commercial booksellers that were on state, um, shut down their facility, uh, this large entity in our neighborhood- Shut down their facility, uh, this large entity in our neighborhood to the university bought it and turned it into. A, um, a sports facility where. The, because that land was zoned in such a way, it, I think it made it more. Purchasable by the university. And so the thing that I. I don't hear in this conversation is that we, we're not just, um, independent actors, we are actors in a, in a system. And, um, the system is not equally distributed. So if there are things in our jurisdiction that make it easy for the university to go in and to acquire. It, it's going to impact our tax base. So why wouldn't we zone things? In a way that, or at least indicate in our comprehensive plan. The, the land use in a way that makes it difficult for that to happen. And then, uh, to your earlier comment, Mr. Leonard, about, uh, infrastructure, I, I've sat at the table now almost three years, four years. And I've heard this back and forth infrastructure when we've talked about changing, uh, primarily residential zoning. But it's my understanding that when a new development comes in, that gets assessed. And if the infrastructure needs to be upgraded, that becomes a part of the development that the city asks. For those, um, infrastructure improvements, uh, in order to permit that. So, and. It's my understanding that our water usage, uh, citywide has gone down, not up. And so it, I, I'm having a hard time reconciling a lot of what I'm hearing because. It, it, it's discordant, um, for what I, I feel like is our main objective here, which is. We recognize we have a primary, like prima facie, uh, issue that we are trying to solve, which is. There is enough, not enough housing. I understand there are other considerations. I, I think Mr. Heidley's comments on Wednesday last. Uh, were helpful for me to hear that, yes, you have ninety thousand jobs, eighty-five thousand people are commuting in. But if you want to go to two hundred and fifty, someone needs to build the next ninety thousand jobs. Um, but I don't know that we achieve that by locking land into specific uses. Hoping that some, you know, future entity is going to emerge to do that. When we have a currently, uh, pressing issue in front of us. So that, that's the discordant. Parts of the conversation that I'm, I'm trying to like make them work together. Um, I don't need an answer. I, I, I just wanted to offer that into the conversation.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Heidley, you have your hand up.
Yeah, I just wanted to, um, not to, uh, just to point out a couple of things. The, the first thing is related to the retail and there's been a lot of comments about this and we actually polled who the top taxpayers are. Uh, taxable valuations in the city and Arborland is number four. And Briarwood, which is presently challenging its valuation is number seven, I believe. And then other than Detroit Edison, everything else are apartment buildings, just for frame of reference. Um, the second thing is the comment about Sartorius and the twelve hundred square, twelve hundred foot, uh, twelve hundred foot distance. A typical buffer for particularly for something like this, and if you were in Cambridge, Mass, there is no buffer between a, between a life sciences plant. Um, and a housing development, but a typical buffer between a residential area. And an industrial park area is around one hundred to two hundred feet usually. But it depends on what the, what the uses are. And since I don't anticipate, like I said, a steel mill being built in Ann Arbor. You know, I don't think that's, I think my concern is that there's about thirty percent of the city's jobs that are not tied to. The hosp, tied to the university or the universities and the hospitals. Um, are in these types of jobs. And about a third of those are held by people of, uh, color or Latino. So. There's a, you know, we care about equity. The other thing that is talked about a lot in the city. Is the A two zero, one of the components of the A two zero plan is a circular economy. The circular economy discussion so far has only talked about waste reduction uses. But there are also other two parts, which is collection, recycling, repair and reuse. And where do you do those if we're not going to do those in the city? So you're going to be, so what does the circular economy part of the A two plan mean? Cause it has to physically takes place sometimes. And the other part of this, which is, and a lot of it's talked about with this council's charge related to housing, the council also put out a number of other charges and, and. Um, one of them is around economic development and charged the Economic Development Director with protecting the city's tax base. Now, part of that is through acquisition, but I will also tell you that acquisition is a very, very expensive way to go about that. Um, and I have a suspicion that's about a specific property or two, but there are other ways to do that. And with regards to. Whether the, whether the university could acquire the property, just because you say it can be residential. As has been evidenced about what's happened with the TC one zoning, doesn't mean that it will become residential. It might at some point in time, but if it's underutilized at the moment and they really want to sell it, somebody will sell it. And that becomes. What we're trying to do with, with this district is provide a mix of jobs inside the city. Uh, preserve what part of the tax base that is not apartments, not residential. Try to maintain and manage the risk of economic gentrification for certain kinds of jobs. Um, and having them be moved to have them to have to move out of the city. And. And again, as, and I said, as Brett said, you know, having distribution or the point about Zingerman's. Zingerman's has seven operations in, in the Ann Arbor area. And six of them are, six of them that have the most jobs of the manufacturing base, the warehousing base are not in the city. I mean, they're adjacent to the city, but they're not in the city. And so we're just trying to come up with a balance and I said it. Two percent, there's a lot of other industrial, there's a lot of other M districts that have existing industrial, which we are saying have at it. Which by the way, are already in areas that have a walkable form, they're along corridors, et cetera. And it's just, as we think about this, you know, this is an area. Unless somebody went in and purchased all of these properties up so that they could do a major redevelopment. It would happen in a very haphazard fashion. And this walkable urban forum district that everybody would like to see in Ann Arbor. Isn't likely to evolve that way anytime soon, unless somebody went in there and literally gobbled it all up. And basically we replanted it, realigned the infrastructure, redid the sidewalks, the roads. And it, and went to a different built form, particularly on the roadside.
Got it. No, thank, thank you, Mr. Heidley. I think that's a really important and, um. Clear distinction on the necessity of economic diversification now. Um, also part of like light industrial production and, and Mr. Leonard will come to it, just I wanted to respond to this particular point. Is, um, a lot of, uh, I do believe that actually retail destinations are important. I also believe economic diversification is going to be important. Um, we can't. In, in just a town of housing, right? Like we can't lose a more measured, balanced approach to this. We want to be able to, and, and what I will say is that not all office. Uh, is created equal, right? Class A's are doing well, so centers of excellence, it's Sartorius, KLA, those are doing, you know, obviously very, very well. In terms of utilization, but class B, class C obviously suffer from, you know, uh, whether it's hybrid work, remote work, et cetera. So I think there is a, um, important distinction to say, what is the recycling and the reuse, adaptive reuse of those kinds of. Um, buildings look like in the long run. Similarly, one of the things I'll mention, you know, based on the utilization of retail and office. A lot of them, you know, to the chagrin of, I think many folks. Citizens around Ann Arbor do require parking. Um, a lot of retail leases will ask for, you know, four spaces per thousand square feet. Sometimes five, six spaces per thousand square feet, whereas offices ranging from three to four, um, they'll require as a, you know, necessary. Uh, ratio in, in leases. And so when you have leasehold interest that dictate it, uh, you have to provide it. So I, I do think that areas that, um, provide for more compact and optimum utilization of land calls for more decks. Um, I know there's been discussions with respect to, and, uh, Mr. Leonard, I see, uh, making kind of a. I, 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 one of, it's just a reality of having, you know, retail oriented destinations as well as, um, offices. Is what they will call for and these, uh. Um, and so it'll take time. I do appreciate actually this. Um, the slide does call for auto supportive design with transitions over time. It will take time for operators. And, and folks who are running these businesses to say, you know, I will give it a try with, you know, more compact urban forums. But, uh, that said, I, I do actually see the rationale behind, um, having kind of dedicated areas. It's just, the concern is that again, like just because you designate a specific area, doesn't necessarily mean that's what's going to come there. Obviously there has to be a constellation of, you know, private parties that want to actually make the investment, take the risk. Sign a lease, et cetera. So, um, I do see the benefit. I've said from the get-go that I think economic diversification. Diversification of the tax base, um, are, are a lot of both goals. And as you said at the beginning, we only really get one chance to do the. Complain, so, um, you can't really go back and amend that. So I, I hear the rationale behind. Um, kind of this non-employment zone, uh, you know, but one of the things is that, you know, as of right now. We are dealing with an imbalance to housing to jobs and that is something that we need to focus on. That being said, um, at a certain point, when, you know, U of M launches six thousand units on their dorms, um, when you have. Uh, all of the different high rises that are going up as well as some of the more denser environments, at, at what point? Have you tipped over, right? And then, um, have we created enough flexibility in zoning code to allow? Um, you know, for additional, whether it's R and D, uh, you know, life sciences. Uh, and, and, and job creators as well. Um, so, yeah, I, I think it has to be a balanced approach. So, uh, I see, so, but. I guess I'm a, I'm kind of straddling, you know, both, uh, I see the benefit, but also, you know, we need to build in the flexibility. Because just because you say this is employment non-residential, doesn't mean it's going to get the optimum level of utilization, kind of like right off the bat. So, um, I probably have a little bit more reflection to do on this particular one. But I, I hear the rationale and I appreciate, um, Mr. Heidley kind of pushing that forth. So. Uh, Mr. Leonard, did you want to, uh, or Mr. Heidley slash Mr. Leonard, did you want to add something real quick? Oh, go ahead, Mr. Leonard.
Yeah, I just, uh, I do want to note that it's, uh, a little bit after nine, which is typically our, um, our goal, but. I guess I don't, if, if we're going to stick to that time, I don't know how much more time you want to take to discuss, discussing it. I'm, I'm fine. Um, but I think. One of the things I'm hearing a similar tension for, um, the scale of housing. And low density residential, but a little bit different. If. If economic diversification is important. To you, Commissioner Lee, I think I heard you said that. I don't know if other commissioners agree with that or not. I think that opening up. All districts to residential. Has the potential to decrease economic diversification rather than increase it. I agree with you. If we do it, it's not going to, uh, it's not going to assure a high utilization of the land. But, uh, as to the Sartorius example. If residential is allowed throughout the research park, I do think that that is, as evidenced by a proposal nearby on South State. Then it is an indicator that that is a market pressure that I think would largely win against. Job creation, whether it's office, whether it's retail, whether it's circular economy processing, you name it. And so. I do think part of the, at the core of this is, do we care? Um, if those uses. Evaporate from the city at a slightly faster rate or slower rate. Um, I don't, I'm not saying that if we do these zones that we're going to guarantee it, but I do think that by opening up these areas to housing. We are adding a market force and pressure that will increase the likelihood. That more non-university of Michigan jobs will leave the city. Um, at a slightly faster clip. And if that's fine, because we have the University of Michigan, we have nine, eighty, you know, ninety-five thousand jobs. And the majority are there. And that's the public policy that we want to take. That's fine, as, as I think we've talked about, as far as being a company town, you could do a lot worse. But it is going to have some economic bearings if, if at the far extreme of that, we became a community with the only jobs here being. Uh, the University of Michigan and housing, that's going to create some real service and financial challenges for us to be able to. Provide water, sewer, pick up trash, do things like sustainability, affordable housing, land use regulation. So I, I, I guess, uh, with, with, with that. Uh, where we are, is economic diversification a goal? Should it be a goal of this plan? We have heard that it should be as part of our community conversation with the public. I think to, uh, jettison this district is not, it's, it's not saying it's not important. But it is a strategy that we can do to support diversification. Do we want to jettison this strategy because we don't think that's. Not as important as I am presenting to you that we should, we should do some land use planning around it.
Yeah, no, thank you, Mr. Leonard. Uh, it's going to Mr. Heidley and Councilmember Dish, and then if we could try to. Um, wrap this up in the next five to ten minutes.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to thank you. I just wanted to say, uh, two quick things. Uh, first. Um, I'm actually on vacation and I thought this was a really important conversation to participate in, so I'm going to go meet my friends. So that's number one, but number two is, um. We did provide a, a deck that kind of walks through the different issues that these districts, the opportunities presented with them. And, and the balancing out between, on the housing issues. So, and I'm happy to come back and have a more detailed conversation at some point in time. About these issues and I, I think it, you know, the economic diversification, I actually think about it as. Financial diversification and resiliency and for the city that, because otherwise you run the risk. It's virtually impossible to stop the university from acquiring more property. Um, you run the risk of having everything on residential. And even though I know that the apartments aren't quote unquote, commercial, they're still residential. And property taxes get factored into the rents. And so one of the other questions here is of, underlying affordability. Just to be able to live in the city unless you build a massive number of apartments, in which case then you run the risk of. As Commissioner Lee would know, you run the risk of devaluing those properties and ultimately hurting your tax base. Um, if you become too dependent upon that, which is the tipping point issue. And I don't know where that is right now. But it's just something to think about and I'm going to go have a cocktail and so have good luck, good night.
Joining us, appreciate that. Uh, Councilmember Dish.
That's how we should all, like, at these meetings going forward.
I'll get a drink. The Councilmember Dish, Commissioner Whitby.
Thank you. I'll be really quick. First, um, I want to thank, um, the consultants for. Making, uh, for persuading Mr. Leonard to, uh, see my perspective on North Main. I did not realize that was going on behind the scenes and that is a monumental achievement for which I congratulate you in the most, uh. Friendliest ironic spirit. So, um. And I would really like to have a broader conversation focused on just this issue because I don't think. I don't think we have a context for thinking about. Thinking more broadly about the need to protect or create some kind of an, an employment district. And I, I don't actually think that we've thought very much about these questions of economic diversification. And the loss of non-university jobs in quite the same way. I think that the questions that were brought up were really good in public comment. And I would like us to think through some of them. I mean, the, what was noticed was that. Housing has been allowed for a long time along Washington and along South Industrial. And it hasn't taken over and pushed out those uses. But I, so I would like to hear us talk about that. You know, what, what makes us think that opening these areas to housing would push out those uses? We can't always know, but I think that, um, it is, I, I believe we heard this information a long time ago when the consultants first came on. But, but, but it is good to be reminded of what our tax base is resting on. And that it may, despite the fact that this is a pretty stable company town. The effects on the makeup of the city of that, you know. uh you know, they if everybody that lives here ultimately ends up having a job at the university or the university hospital, that probably doesn't look like the city that we want it to be. So I would really like to have a dedicated session to that part so we can really, I know you guys have been talking about it for a long time. So maybe we're a little bit too new to it and we're a little bit stuck on a perspective where all we can see is housing. So.
Thank you. Uh Commissioner Wetherby.
I don't disagree with anything that anybody said, but I just, I wanted to look at a few, just a little perspective. So it's hard to tell specifically how many employees Sartorius would bring into Ann Arbor or has brought into Ann Arbor. But uh from what I can see, we're looking at maybe three hundred, say five hundred at the highest, highest. And last year, the university employed fifty three thousand eight hundred and thirty one in Ann Arbor. So I I think, you know, there's a the saying where the university, the university is ninety thousand small businesses united by a football team. And and I think that we do have to be careful of saying that the university is a thing with a certain type of employee because that that's not actually true. And and that there just has to be some, like we are a company town. We do want more diversity, but diversity in these areas isn't going to give us a local hardware store, because that's a whole different, a whole different thing. So I think we're kind of conflating some of these. And like, do we want to give up huge portions of the city to bring in three hundred employees when we have thirty thousand employees who don't have a place to live in the city? I don't know where that all falls, but it's just to me, there's a little bit of perspective where we, we can't, I mean, sometimes the discussions at the university kind of ignore the city, and sometimes the city discussions kind of ignore the university. And I don't think that's really doable. Like, we have to include the university and the I and the people who work at the university because that is us and you know, yes, Sartorius is a huge deal. And yes, Sartorius is bringing a lot of money in and a lot of employees, but it's still very minor compared to what the university has. Um I mean, they're bringing in taxes, which is.
I I think that's a really good point, um which speaks to the um efficient um utilization of land, right? Like, how big is our campus relative to the number of employees generated? Look at how optimally economically efficient, like the hospital is, right? And how how intense, the intensity of youth utilization in that respect. And so I I do think that's a good point. And I think one of the the drawbacks, as I had mentioned earlier, is just simply retail, uh you know, as necessary as they are does necessitate certain levels of parking, right? Which can make the utilization less um um strong. And same thing with Sartorius. Again, it's kind of a more of a suburban center of excellence on that southern side of the research campus. So um I I uh I think you make a very great point in that respect. Um there's three points that I know that I I told somebody that I would try to bring up uh tonight was uh um I I think I made a reference to removing the units per lot unit in the um low rise, uh but having kind of like smart growth um was one of the items. Taking a look at max height limits in mixed use transition and hub, um if there's already tapered height limits, do you need a hard cap? Um that that is one, I think, something for discussion. Um and then the last point, which we're kind of debating about, is the allowance of housing in all districts relative to do we have a non-residential district? Um again, coming back to the efficient utilization of land, um again, you again, there's going to be requirements on parking when it comes to retail areas. But really kind of thinking about, um yeah, what is the balancing between, again, I I I truly do believe economic diversification should be something that's important. And Julie, uh Commissioner Wetherby does make a great point. There are many departments. And it's not also to say that we're also, U of M is also investing in a center for innovation, like an innovation district, as well as a convention center on that north campus area. So uh we know there's more things kind of coming along the horizon. Um those are the three things that I do want to talk about. I don't know that there's a right, I you know, um concept. I do apologize if I seem more flip-floppy. It's because all of these policy decisions come with a trade-off. Um and so uh I do believe that you can't have a boring city and like retail is fun, right? Having access to goods is also a necessity. So the circular economy is important. Uh but yeah, I I I want to also just make sure to kind of touch on those three kind of uh policy thoughts as we we end here. I think a lot more to come. Uh for our consultants, are there any other questions that you wanted to have? I know we're twenty minutes over, so I want to wrap it up in like the next two, three minutes. So any final thoughts?
Nothing. I mean, you you brought it up a little bit about, you know, we didn't really get to talk about the mixed use transition. Um but maybe that just is an opportunity for discussion later on. I'm I'm sure that would be a long conversation if we're to continue now, so we can figure out uh, you know, the best way to continue that conversation.
Yeah, and I was going to just add that I don't know if you had a chance to review the um supplemental material that was probably provided just today on that helps to explain some of the rationale for economic development and the relationship between housing, um tax base and economic diversification. But that would have, that I think that was applied today. So it it might help to illuminate some of these um things that we talked about today. And as Kevin said, it might be worth regrouping to dive into that particular memo a little bit more deeply um to help answer some of these questions or or continue some of these questions, particularly what we what we've just discussed, which I I have as like, you know, thinking about how important is economic diversification as a goal? How can we think of it in terms of, for instance, efficient use of land? Um and then some of what Kevin was saying with regard to, you know, if we shift our tax base to be more heavily reliant on residential, what are the implications for that for um affordability going forward? So that is in the packet, which may necessitate an additional uh convening.
That would be great. Um, yes, hundred percent. Thank you for bringing that back up. With that, any other final thoughts before we wrap up and adjourn this meeting? All right. Thank you for a great conversation. Thank you for all the presentation and the heartbumps thus far. And uh we will look to reconvene and let's try to get together uh soon. Happy Thanksgiving, everybody. So, thank you.
Thanks a lot. Bye.